Let's bring the October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four regular board meeting of the Big Bear Lake Waste Water Agency in court.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its justty to govern all.
I second.
Second.
Vice Chair Harry.
Hi.
Director Russo, oh, sorry, Director Segovia.
Aye.
Director Walsh.
Aye.
And Chair Miller.
Aye. Number four, public forum, public testimony is permitted at this time. The Warren Act and Senate House, other matters not listed on the posted agenda. But are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency, state law prohibits the agency from taking action on any items not listed on the posted agenda. Public comment on items listed on the posted agenda will be taken at time. In fact, each item is called to discussion. Do we have anybody in that wish to speak in their public forum?
Daniel.
Three or five minutes?
Three.
Okay. Number one, solar panels. On the last financial thing, I saw a lot of expenditures, but no credits, and I was wondering why about that? Number two. It seems like we have people that are trying to get rid of camping. Big Bear Lake tried to do a conflicts of interest code. It was a special meeting. That got canceled in August, then in September had the fire. And then I think people got embarrassed because what they were trying to do is shatter. Just try to, I should say, motor. You buried it in the. In the consent calendar. And it should have been separated, and what you did to fix the consent, I mean, the conflict of interest was minimal, a couple of words. And it was just a CYA because you were embarrassed. Then we have warfare, lawfare. Using PPK to try to get rid of the people that you don't want to vote for the water. For the toilet to tap. They tried to screw Chuck Hicks. By making him pay the attorney fees, and I think you guys could have fixed it easily. But you wanted to get rid of them, and most people wouldn't pay the amount of money. Twenty, less than, less than twenty-five thousand, and the. We have to pay BBKs, which is probably be somewhere around forty or fifty thousand. I see why Mr. Larcher for the board in the city. Put it on approval. That they support it because it's just a bunch of garbage. It's more government involved. To, to support that. What you're gonna do here in the water. Ten million dollars for things that are just unbelievable. It's gonna end up costing sixteen, eighteen billion dollars. Priorities like benefiting disadvantaged, the DEI. Everything's DEI now. So we get the, the, this state to provide some of these funds and to, to be made available to different cities. They're worried about offshore wind. They wanna put up towers out there, and that was a real success out on the east coast. They're trying to increase it for some different things.
Thank you, Daniel.
So, read. Number four. It's unbelievable.
Joseph Kelly.
I know. Hello. I wanted to inform Barwa of some pertinent issues to this agency and all of the agencies in Big Bear. These are legal issues that Barwa faces, among other agencies. Yesterday, the Superior Court entered a judgment against the hospital district for violating tax law. You should think, keep that in mind because Barwa is under legal scrutiny now for violating tax law. Take that as a notice. Now, my legal department is. Addressing a violation of my civil rights. By the hospital district, and everybody in this room should understand civil rights. My lawyer. Submitted legal notice to the hospital district today for violation of my civil rights. Violating the Constitution, this is for all, every, every person who works for the government. The Brown Act and conflict of interest regulations are all very serious. You are expected to understand these laws and these rights that the people hold dear. If you violate them, you will lose your qualified immunity. And you will be personally liable for any damages. In a lawsuit under forty-two USC nineteen eighty-three. So you may not wanna be violating rights. I was told that the items on the consent calendar need to be addressed now, and. I'd like to address that. Under consent calendar, it's item eleven D of the minutes of the last meeting that's founded. It says, "The governing board asked for an update on replenishing Big Bear grants and inquire why the items needs, why the item needs to be presented again to the board." What you don't see in the minutes is an answer, because there was no answer. There was a bunch of conflation and obfuscation. From the general manager of this agency. And a good question was asked, but there was no answer. It was just a bunch of deferring until later because that's politically expedient. So take note of all these legal things. It affects every government agency in this valley and everybody working for the government. Our rights are important.
Thompson.
Okay. Our Big Bear City Council, Barwa, is a part of the existing government that totally controls us. The city council of Barwa are a reflection of the Nixon, Bush, Clinton, Obama, and Biden regime. Also known as the swamp, the deep state, the cartel, and the black hats. It is time to drain the swamp. It is time for you to stop. You have less than a month to eradicate as our government, period. Our governmental regime exists now. No more socialism, communism, totalitarianism, totalitarian dictatorships. George Washington seventeen eighty-nine. No generation has a right to debt greater than can be paid off during the course of its existence, mine especially. The Organic Act of February twenty-first, eighteen seventy-one, the forty-first Congress passed legislated. Legislation entitled "An Act to Provide a Government with the District of Columbia." By this action, with no constitutional authority, a separate form of government was created for the ten square miles known as the District of Columbia. Washington DC Incorporated. The original US Constitution was entitled "The Constitution of the Constitution for the United States of America." And the Act of eighteen seventy-one changed the title to be "The Constitution of the United States," I mean, of the United States of America. By changing the title and the capitalization of this constitution, the people were removed from this new constitution and made slaves to the administrative law written by the government for the government. There is no statute of limitation for any governmental individual or corporation, no time limit. For, for any of the violations that you have committed or have already committed or are going to commit. It's time to go back to the original constitution. It's just a matter of weeks now. None of you will be missed. Thank you.
Well said.
So. I keep hearing you continue to talk about putting poop in our water or recycling your sewer water. That's never gonna happen. And to think that you guys can, think that you can consider that without talking to the neighborhood, they will never go for it. And the fact that you continue to ram this stuff down our throat. By the way, I have property and I choose to grow plants. And there's no way you're gonna restrict my water ability. I will sue you of violation of my rights. In order to have my, be able to wash my car or to be able to have plants. And to have landscaping. It is our right, and this is our water underneath the pier as well. It's not yours. It belongs to the citizens of Big Bear City, along the lake, the CSD area, and I'm tired of Big Bear Lake coming over here. That's a conflict of interest. You guys are in corporation. You're along with the, the corporate establishment. And he's right about the hospital. They're in violation of the rights. I'm not having my proper medical care, and now they're continuing to try to tax me. For insurance that I don't want. I do not wanna be a part of established medicine, and I will be going to the hospital where I've actually been invited after the meeting they had here. And I, I, you know, with my allergies and stuff, and, and they're trying to force people to take the vaccine in order to have heart surgery with, you know, he has. It's like we have no rights anymore. You're total violation of our rights every time you turn around. These GPA agreements, I don't believe are legal. I don't believe you have authority to try to tell our jurisdiction, our, or what will jurisdiction, how we're gonna operate without properly going through the community. Which you're choosing not to do, which we've been telling you, and that's one of the reasons I love Segovia so much. Because she keeps repeating it at meetings all the time, that you need to notify the community, and you need to tell them the proper truth, not your made-up legalism. Because I'm so sick of your monopoly, legalism, dangling carrots in front of us, BS. We're tired of it. We're not gonna show along with it, and it's the entire, most of my neighborhood. So, there you go. Thank you. So sorry, I missed her. I got fell asleep. I was gonna come. I totally support you.
One hundred percent.
Thank you.
I don't have any more comments.
All right, moving on to presentations and introductions. I'm Friday Audit Report from this year ended June third, two thousand and twenty-four.
For this, I have Brad Walter, the funders, everything that I'll be in the spot. Y'all need to know that I have nothing to add on it.
Good evening. Nice to be with you tonight. My name is Brad Over, and I'm the engagement partner on the audit that was completed recently for this one year ended June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. And you have a copy of the report here in front of you. This is the annual comprehensive financial report of the agency. And I just wanted to let you know that our opinion letter in there is expressing an unmodified opinion, which is. Which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide over the financial statements, indicating that there are no material deviations or issues noted. That would say that the, the, the finance, agency's financial statements are not in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that is reported. Page one, two, and three of the annual comprehensive financial report. There's plenty of numbers involved that show the activity that happened during the year, some comparative numbers prior year. And speaking with Christine earlier, she was gonna present on some of those numbers, so I'm just gonna focus more on the audit and the work that our team did. So we started our audit with doing some interim work. In June of two thousand and twenty-four, during our interim work, we do some internal control testing over various cycles, including billing. Cash and investments, information technology, capital assets, and so forth. We use this internal control testing to help develop the audit plan that we're gonna put into place and. Perform when we do the year-end work. And if we have any findings that come up during our testing, we do alert management and award to that if there are findings. I'm pleased to say there were no findings of internal control concerns that we noted during our testing. I will say that the purpose of our audit is not to provide an opinion over internal controls, but we do evaluate the controls courtesy of designing our audit. If we notice there are any concerns, share that with management. The second phase of our audit occurred in August through October, and this is the year-end portion. This happens after the closing of just the year-end, and. And Christine and the team have a chance to close the books for the year, make finally, some adjustments are only at year-end, for example, related pensions. And other items. So that's why it starts in August, and on your presentation on the screen, you see some of the items that are included as part of our audit procedures. A lot of inquiries and examination of documents, so we. See representation from management about what they're doing and what they've done, and then we cooperate that with audit evidence. Which will be what the, for example, invoices, checks, and statements, confirming various balances over parties, looking at grant agreements, and if there's any. Requirements for that, for compliance, then we're testing compliance of that, and had there been any findings in these procedures, they would be reported if you. In writing, don't have any of those findings. For new accounting pronouncements during the year, there was one, which is the SCASB statement number one hundred. And it has, just has to do with accounting changes and error corrections, so it is technically adopted, but you didn't have any items this year that qualified for that, so there was no impact on financials. Started off, you know, just going straight to the, that opinion, which I mentioned is unmodified reporting. And then we also issued a separate letter that you should have here. This is our communication in accordance with Statement of Audit Standards number fifteen. So we're required to give you highlights of the results of that, and we're doing that in writing, plus I'm here to present to you some of those key highlights. For example, there is no uncorrected misstatements reported by the agency. There is no difficulty working with agency staff in performing our audit. And we did not have any disagreements with management related to any financial reporting or accounting issues. If also in the report on internal control or financial reporting, which is included as part of this report here, there's no deficiencies, which are that no matters, non-compliance, nobody during our. I think we might part of the presentation, Christine.
I have my presentation. So any questions?
Yes.
I have a question. Who does the audit?
So. Okay, so with, I'm not sure if I can, can I adjust the audience? It's okay.
If you want to just, okay, my company, sure, I'm just calling for.
Yeah, the name of our firm is Rogers, Anderson, Malady, and Scott. We are CPA firm based out of San Bernardino. Been in public practice since nineteen forty-eight, and I'm the engagement partner responsible for signing the report and supervising all the work on the, on the. Audit, and then I have a team of other CPAs that were involved in running this. Rogers, Anderson, Malady, and Scott, or Rams, CPA.
Yes. It's in the. Oh, thank you.
Yes, because you know, the copies are on the table or.
The agenda, there's the reports, so there's a binder out there. There's not specific copies of the. But that's, yeah, that'll be available online next week.
The presentation is out there.
Presentation is out there.
Yes.
Any questions for board members?
Yes.
Walsh. I don't know what to call this. Your handout, active?
The, the charge of the report, and this is the letter. Letter to governance, those charge of governance, we refer to it internally as a SaaS one fourteen, the vectors were great to our standards that require this. But it's, it's a common report that accompanies every audit.
I'm guessing the first five pages are from you, the next is from in-house?
Yes, so, well, they're all, they're all prepared by us, so we have attached what we call the management representation letter. It's the second part of the report, and so we're preparing this letter, and management is signing up on it. It's essentially saying that they have. Truthfully and faithfully provided us all of the information that we need to perform our audit.
I ask because the first five pages are much different paper. Yes, you're on wait there.
Yes.
So I wondered.
Okay, there's they both, well, that's probably, you know, that's just a way that our team processed it because. Well, it's, I mean, probably from our letterhead letter and the other one from our.
And then I know that. I believe it was back in June, I got a letter. I believe from your firm.
That's correct.
Wanted to know if I knew of any curious people or processes. It listed me as president. I was present for, I think, one and a half meetings. It should have gone to Miller. Where do you get your sources, who do they send it to?
Well, we get that from management.
That was my mistake.
Also.
Yes, that's everybody.
Yeah, I think we're all.
Yes, we did, yeah, thank you for that.
I'm sorry I didn't notice that.
And, and, yeah, that's sorry for that oversight, but it doesn't have any bearing on the audit because we acquired all of the board members.
Well, I signed it, returned it, pointing out that I was not president because I didn't want to misunderstand. Otherwise, no, this is about what you do every year?
Yes, and we received the responses to those. That's very important in helping us guide the audit. And, I mean, it's not, it's a common thing to get back response like the way that you send them back, because most times people are not aware of things going on, but. We wanna make sure if you are aware that we can know that, so that we can design our audit to address any issues that you are aware of.
Well, in reality, if I knew about illegal things going on, or if I was involved in those illegal things. You really think I sent a letter back to slowly, yeah? For a bunch of crooks? I mean, it's required here. But I don't.
It's a, it's a legal document, everybody, you know, we all. I get one, you all get one, and right, so it's all just attaching to what our knowledge base.
Okay.
Right, and that's, the point is to, to do our best to be as honest and truthful as possible, but every person in the board, myself. And Christine get one, gets one, and, and we all have to go through them and attest to them. And it's also about awareness about others, or even allegations or anything. We, in, you know, in all the years I've been doing this. I, I can, you know, right now, think of any time where we received a surprising answer from these, because. If there's an issue, it's usually brought up right away. Legal counsel is important, general manager is important, auditors are important, so there's. Transparency around the significant issues of concern, by the way, but as a matter of completeness, since we don't get to see you all. You know, before we design our audit, we wanna make sure that we give them a chance to respond to us if anything.
You may have depreciation and depreciation schedules. And I presume also the capital improvement plan, CIP, is incorporated into that. I didn't see it specifically, and I, I actually talked to the, I just wanted to make comment that. The downfall line, which is a very expensive pipe that is seventy-three miles to where it is, because of the, the, that is. Something that needs to be depreciated and replaced at, at some point, and I just can see that, you know, in it, but I confirmed the data that that is part of the.
Yeah, we have a extensive, I think there's over six hundred different items on our depreciation schedule that feeds into our. Twenty-year CIP that is presented to the board during our budget process. And that item is listed in there as an item that's been fully, I think it's, I'm not quite sure if it's fully depreciated or not, it's. I have to look at the lifespan on that, but it is included in the depreciation schedule. So, and it is something that we can, will be addressing. With this coming budget.
Is there any money set aside? Has been set aside for years for replacement?
Eight years past, there was money for investigation into that line, but part of the concerns that we had were. You could only, to investigate that line, you had to cut it. And that only gives you about a thousand beat of. Video that we could do. So, we are going to look at replacing the air valves that exist on the line. And then see how far they can get within the air valves as opposed to, as opposed to cutting the line. So with, our plan is to do something about it and to investigate that line, but there was money previously set aside, and then. We didn't feel. Confident in the fact that we were gonna go into the national forests and cut a sewer main. It wasn't really like a. One of those things that I was really joyous about doing. So we're gonna, we're gonna take a different approach to it, but we will be investigating that line.
What up to your next year's budget?
It will be in next year's capital program plan. I'm not sure if it'll be in exactly for your next year's budget, but if, if it fits in with our. Our. Available funding, then we'll, we'll do it and, and.
Thank you.
Yeah, yet, yeah, just hanging on to what, so, or Harry said. We've punished Big Bear. That project had, I mean, over the last six years, we've kind of. Get some deferred maintenance or deferred replacements or projects that we haven't done in anticipation of replenishing Big Bear going through this, so now those. Have got to be put back into the budget even on our updated depreciation schedule, or maybe have to pay for it ASAP, or, I mean, that, that's an issue that's not really been fully discussed is. Is we're not getting one of the hidden, hidden benefits of replenishing, because of the plant. And what the plant we have now is fifty years old. Those lines are fifty years old, fifty years old, so, you know, we wanted to have a lot at one point. Three million dollar accident this year, or break or failure. And, and I think we're dealing with, you know, maybe a roof replacement now too, because of the, you know. I think, I guess my point is the next couple of years, we're gonna have to be a little bit more aggressive about this, because it's just, the plant's been over, the lines are getting older. And, you know, that depreciation schedule is gonna be really, really important to how we, because of this.
Yeah, and there were, there were several projects that were originally in the capital improvement plan that were being implemented with the management project. You know, like asphalt, we talked about asphalt in the past, we talked about combined bubble diffuser. There's a couple of different, you know, projects, very much like that, that we've talked about in the past, that will. That will have to be put back into the capital improvement plan and done. Sooner than later, and we'll, we'll have to put that back in our CIP plan. So yes, we'll have, it, it's, we are starting to look at that CIP plan. With the idea of having to put some of those things back into it, that will happen. Sooner than, than. We, you know, instead of happening with the replenishment period, it will happen with the CIP project.
Any guests on the, on the, we have any thoughts on?
You know, I, I, until I put together that plan and finish up that CIP plan, I'd rather not. Put against, and the other thing that, you know, a lot of. The depreciation schedule space was based on like basically a replacement cost, so they took the original cost that we only put it in, and then it escalated over time. What it would to, to replace those. And so, a lot of the things that it didn't include were engineering costs, environmental review, there's a lot of different, and then. The cost escalation actually has changed too, because. Originally, we didn't have rent and wage, a lot of things that were in there, so those, the, the overall plan is, is being evaluated for them.
But that's something I think we're gonna have to deal with this next. We're gonna be dealing around with the budget restructure.
We're, we're definitely gonna be dealing with it. We're definitely gonna bring that forward to the board for discussion. And that consideration with this budget cycle, and we're gonna do our very best to as much information. And cost estimates and those things together as quickly as possible, because obviously. Our budget cycle is, is coming up. As we all know, it, it, we started in January, February, February?
First meeting.
That first meeting is in February, so. We. We start now and then by the time it gets back to the board, it's in February, but it takes several, you know, quite a bit of time. So.
Comments or questions? Thank you very much. Christine, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have five minutes for this? Yeah, there is. Uh, I really appreciate audits as C I P is. Thank you for the audit and information. And uh let's take the last thing first that was mentioned. Uh, Director Miller mentioned, well, look at all this maintenance that we should have been doing that was not done because we assumed the so-called replenished big bear project would go through. Well, it was assumed by staff and some members on this board because you didn't ask the public about a hundred million dollar now kind of a project, you didn't ask the public. And then you assume that you could just ignore the facilities at this existing situation. And oh, we don't have to do that because replenish big bear is coming and it's gonna solve all those problems. And in fact, the reason why this question was brought up by Director Miller was political. So you can say boo hoo, look, if we don't do replenish big bear, we're gonna have to fix all these pipes and stuff. And that's why Director Herrick is nodding, yeah, we're gonna have to look at this in this coming uh budget. That's all political and that's fine for them. Of course, there's a conflict of interest with Director Herrick directly. And the Fair Political Practices Commission is reviewing my sworn complaint regarding that. But for staff to assume that that's gonna happen, you even advertised it, that, oh, look at this great stuff. Uh, so that is not our fault. Maintenance was not done because of dereliction of duty by staff. Now, maybe they didn't take this to the board. But that deferred maintenance is the fault of staff. And who's in control of staff? The board sets policy and the general manager controls staff. That's where that is. The other, we'll go backwards further and a good question by uh Director Walsh. Do these officials have to uh inform the auditor if that something illegal is happening? Well, uh, that's a good question and it was my part, didn't we all have, but legally uh, you, yes, you do have a duty. It could be submersion of perjury if you don't report this illegalities and it could be and or misprision of felony. Yeah, write that down. Uh, so yes, you do have duties to report illegalities as public officials to the proper authorities. If you're not doing that, that's called misprision of felony. Uh, going further, in these great uh financials that we're looking at, we find a statement from the uh uh state of California regarding Barwa's life account. That's the uh local agency investment fund. And it says that Barwa has ten million dollars in the life account, the investment fund, that's money in the bank. Coincidentally, the number I keep hearing about uh paying back for all these grants and loans is about ten million dollars. Uh, of course, paying back those grants, that's only if they ask to be paid back. So that's another political B S. About almost ten million dollars we have to pay back if we don't go ahead with so-called replenished big bear. And Barwa's grants, they have to request to get paid back. But also, that ten million dollars can pay back the public for what we've spent, we paid to this agency through the member agencies and the J P A. We can get paid back and uh we're looking at that legally. Okay, because that may be a violation also. And uh so if you want to say, okay, we got ten million dollars in life, right? I don't get any confirmation on that. The hospital district has forty two million dollars in the bank right now in their life account. Four times as much, but at least the hospital district allows us to vote in an election before they tax us, Barwood is not.
Just real quick, I I thought that I didn't mean for me, that's a good word replacement. That was just a poor trust and words of my part, so I understand.
Uh, it was an exit, it was, it was a discussion with the board not to cut up asphalt and then cut back into it, put it into, put back in pipes. So it was actually a board, a board discussion that to not move forward with certain projects until that is complete because of it doesn't make economic sense. Right? And that's, that's what we're about is to make economic sense when we do, when we don't do stuff like cut up asphalt and then cut it up again.
And that's, that's what I was.
And I, I understood that, so that's.
No comments.
Daniel.
Yeah, hi. Well, I totally agree with the last follower that has it pretty well under control. And borrow that big word, but it's typical government. Trying to get things through. Push your back up against the wall. Oh, we don't get this, we're gonna lose this and that. They don't want to give the money back to the people. They don't want to vote on it. They want to keep it secretive. And this is part of the problem. Big Bear Lake does the same thing. They put everybody's back up against the wall. A lot of times they don't bring up issues until the late year where they could be doing it in January. I think two meetings a month should be good. So I can't add much to it, but I second what he said. And I get kind of tired of typical government mismanagement of the lies. It's not full and truthful. And this top four is a perfect example of that. That you can re- uh allocate to wherever you want it. And so they did, FEMA did for a billion dollars to illegal daylands. And then they let the people in Western North Carolina starve to death or don't do anything to help them. That's government.
Tom Simmons.
I've got plenty of time. Um, I agree with what these gentlemen said one hundred percent. Again, consistency. You are constantly failing to inform the people without a vote or even asking if that's okay. You assume that we are gonna say that you assume everything. Right? Anyway, assumption gets you to piss more perfect for preparation. Makes for piss poor performance. I've said this before and this is what happens over and over and over again. Piss poor preparation makes for piss poor performance and that's what keeps happening is consistently happening throughout all of our government, period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to, uh, John's on here tonight, so.
No, John's not here today.
So we'll move on to the general manager report.
Um, just to, um we have the fourth main project that we're going to tentatively reschedule to bid in the spring. Um, just based on the timing of the project. Getting uh the equipment that we would need to move, uh, to have the contract to move forward. It's going to, we're gonna get into our seasonal weather and it just doesn't make sense. So we're gonna take uh necessary precautions um during this year um to ensure that uh that line continues to operate in the uh the way it needs to. Um, the other thing is that we've uh reached out to the city. Um, and we've been working with the city on um out uh cleaning out some of the ponds out, out at the um L P S station. So that way it allows for some of this uh excess I N I that comes into the, to the city to be placed out there temporarily and what, and then be fed back into the system. Um, and to, again, to deal with some of the I N I issues. And uh we're gonna be uh cleaning out one of our ponds uh in preparation for this uh fourth main project and to deal with the additional I N I. So I I I thank the city for for jumping right on it, seeing the the need and uh we're jumping right on it and um out there. So I do appreciate it. So um other than that, I don't have any other um, I mean, the other comments on with regard to the general manager report, but hoping for any questions.
Questions or comments? What comment I have is it looks like connections are still still noise bomb.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we had, we got additional twelve. Um, I think about half and half coming from the city, half come from C S T, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, we're doing, we're doing, we're getting a lot of connections into our system. Um, which, which is amazing. Uh, obviously it helps the, you know, again, contribute towards the capital projects that we need to expand the system um and improve the system where where it's needed, so.
Yeah. I did have a question.
Okay.
Yes, but I'm not sure who it's for.
Okay.
Are you gonna do a presentation on?
Yes.
Or this is.
And and.
All we tell them.
Okay.
And comments, questions? None will move on consent counter here. How many of us on the consent counter have been acted upon one motion before the time? There'll be no separate discussion of these items if the detailed discussion is necessary. Any governor or board member may request that an item be renewed in the consent counter and considered separately. Then, do any of the board members wish to? Seeing none will uh get a motion. A little bit so you don't. A second.
Vice Chair Harry.
Hi.
Director Sidonia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi. There's no items to move consent now and we run out of nine to go business. And none, new business on a ten A and a rich work for the fiscal year ended June thirty twenty one.
To summarize, operating revenues for all budget. Operating expenditures are seven percent below budget, that includes gas adjustments. That non-operating income and expense was two point three six million higher than budget and that was mainly grant driven. Capital contributions or connection fee revenue was a hundred and sixty two percent higher than budget. So we'll start with changes to the budget. Near the beginning of the fiscal year, the governing board approved carryover appropriations for budgeted projects that were not completed in the prior fiscal year and will be completed in the current fiscal year. For operating expenses, those carryover appropriations were just under forty nine thousand for the projects listed on the slide. Additionally, the governing board may approve new appropriations during the fiscal year for unplanned projects that need to be completed during that year. And again, in operating expenses, those new appropriations were just over eighty three thousand. That included a reclassification and a force main investigation. We go on to capital expenditures, the carryovers for capital expenditures were just over three million and that was for the projects listed on this slide. And we have new appropriation for the administrative building roof of twenty five thousand. So let's go on to the income statement. This is a stat plot of the income statement and then we'll discuss these variances in the next slides. And we'll start with operating revenues. Operating revenues were greater than the budget by just under seven thousand, which is less than one percent variance. This is due largely to an increase in other operating income which included an insurance claim reimbursement and solar energy credits. This was partially offset by the reclassification of rental income to non-operating lease revenue during the period. The reclassification was related to G A S V E seven, which is the general accounting standard for its guidance requiring the recognition of lease assets and lease liabilities. The agency's largest operating revenues are super user rates. The agency's goal is to keep rate increases at or near inflation. With the addition of the replenished big bear project, the average has been above inflation. The average annual rate increase over a ten-year period is four point seven percent increasing to seven point eight percent over a five-year period and eleven percent over a three-year period. Dry weather flows are seven hundred and eighty eight million gallons, as evidenced by the likely line on the ground. When looking at the ten-year average, those are approximately seven hundred and twenty three million gallons, which is sixty five million gallons lower will be up than the dry weather flows. This way your twenty four flows total just under eight hundred and eighteen million gallons, which is greater than the dry weather flow average by just under thirty million gallons. Higher flows will affect the variable rates charged to the member agencies in subsequent years. Now let's talk about operating expenses. As you can see, there were savings across all line items. We will discuss these savings in the following slides. Flexing treatment and disposal was twenty percent or approximately three hundred and seven thousand below budget. The largest savings were in repairs and replacements, power and sledge removal. Repair and replacement expense was below budget by just under a hundred fifty eight thousand or fifty one percent due to such as the treatment bed or replacement. Additionally, several completed projects were moved to capital for help purposes. Those projects were for force main access point repair, two pump rebuilds and repairs to a rotor and oxidation ditch two. When adding these projects back, repairs and replacements expense was below budget by just under thirty eight thousand or twelve percent. Power expense was lower than the budget by just under fifty seven thousand or eleven percent, which is mainly a result of higher production of solar power resulting in a decrease in electricity costs for the treatment bed and administration building. Electricity costs are budgeted based on an average. Solar production came online in December of fiscal year twenty two. As more data is available, the budget for solar purchases and electricity will adjust. Sledge removal expense was below budget, below the budget by just over forty four thousand or thirteen percent. Sledge removal was budgeted based on removing just under five thousand tons. However, actual tons fall was four thousand four hundred and thirteen, a reduction of five hundred and seventy six tons for the year to date period. Excluding gas B sixty eight, seven and seventy five related adjustments, salaries and benefits were below budget by just over forty nine thousand or two percent. With employee benefits seeing the greatest savings as a result of a lower required unfunded accrued liability payment than expected. When accounting for gas B sixty eight, seventy five adjustments, salaries and benefits were flat when compared to budget. So right and talk about pension liability. As you can see, the unfunded accrued liability increased as of June thirty of twenty three, reducing the funded ratio. Calculations for the funding target, target reflects the expected long-term investment return of six point eight percent. The return for fiscal year twenty three was high twenty percent, one percent lower than expected. When factoring in Calpers discount rate or investment return, then in actual fiscal year twenty three return, the estimated funded status was reduced. The lower investment return will not impact the agency's contribution rates until fiscal year twenty six and will be included in that budget. Just an FYI, Calpers has reported a preliminary return of nine point three percent in fiscal year twenty four, which is much higher than the established discount rate of six point eight percent. Which is much higher than the established discount rate of six point eight percent. For Capra members. The funded ratio as of June thirty is a kind of rate decreased to eighty-nine point one percent. From the prior year funded ratio of eighty-nine point eight percent as a result of the lower investment returns. And the O P E V for other post-implanted business trend also saw a decrease from sixty-six point nine percent to sixty-five point six percent. Again, a result of the. Contractual services professional were below budget by just hundred thirty-five thousand or eighteen percent. Primarily driven by lower legal expenses. Contractual services other were slightly lower than budget by seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. There were slight variances across the line items for permits and fees and in real estate. Other operating expense was below budget by just hundred fourteen thousand or twenty-three percent. Primarily driven by lower education and training expense due to training that was budgeted but not attended. As well as lower lower advertising expenses. Now we'll talk about non-operating income and expense. Non-operating income expense and expense had a positive variance of two point three six million compared to the budget and was driven by much higher. Non-operating income, greater by approximately two point two million. Due mostly to grant reimbursements related to the replenished big bear project and the increase in interest income. New connections to this zone were higher than budget by seventy-three, with connections coming in at one hundred and eighteen, which is forty-five budgeted. This will year twenty-four included sixty-two non-recurring connections for a new hotel. Non-recurring connections account for multi-unit loans and businesses such as hotels, they find the products to name a few. When looking at the tenure average of non-recurring connections, that average is fifty-seven per year. In the year cash balance was two point three million higher than final budget. Lower operating expenses as well as higher debt, non-operating income income expense. And connection fee revenue for the primary um, factors affecting cash balance. Now we'll talk about debt service. Debt service coverage is six point four times, which is higher than the covenant level of one point two times. As determined by the agency's current loan covenants. Debt outstanding is just under five point five billion. This will year two thousand nineteen includes the addition of the two thousand eighteen installment purchase agreement for the bell press. This will year twenty-three includes the addition of the three point four million replenished big bear bridge load. Debt capacity has increased as expected. This is due to the increased revenues for replenished big bear. Based on the current debt service coverage of six point four four times, the agency has approximately twenty million in debt capacity. Meaning the agents confirm twenty million and still meet the agents' part of debt service ratio of two times. Which is higher than the covenant level of one point two times as determined by the agency's loan covenants. So to close, the agency's finances still generates adequate cash flow, debt service cover just is spread four or five times. Access debt capacity and reserves are fully funded. And now, any questions?
I wanna make sure I understand. The money and weight. Would be a combination of. Eaters. Mandated by self-mandated. And any funds not immediately. In demand. This is plus, this is spare change.
No. Yes.
On the other, was in terms of. No page number, operating expenses, collection, treatment and disposal with the two heavy. At the three heavy bar lines. When we talk about repairs and replacements, I'm thinking of the white. Isn't that where the? Say the eighty thousand dollar a year that had to be fabricated. Should that have come out of here? If eighty dozen. Um, I remember the piece of equipment that it ate itself up, it blew up. The bearings and my beauty, okay, yes, I, so.
The, that's repairs and replacement and I I I think it's a capital project, right?
Okay, so we have the oxidation denture care, which was the runner. That did go with repairs and replacements because it wasn't an actual cap- capital project, however. Our capitalization threshold is ten thousand dollars a year. So basically what happens is at the end of the year, some of these projects, like the force main access point. Was more than that threshold, we actually take it out of repairs and replacements and put in capital so we can capitalize it. So then it goes on our depreciation schedule. Did I make that more confusing?
No.
Okay.
It's what. You're used to doing it as a finance person. Where, that's why I have to ask, sometimes it gets lost in translation.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
So basically, if it's not a capital project that's actually on our capital plan. But we have something that comes up like the force main, it still needs to be capitalized for capital purposes.
The the bushing was another one that came up that wasn't part of our original capital plan, we didn't expect that. Bushing in the bottom of the clarifier to go out and that's another one that we had to go in, but it is capitalized. Because it is, um, it wasn't originally part of the budget and it also wasn't, um. I mean, nobody even recognized that there was. Nylon bushings at the bottom of the.
So would you?
But those, the the two clarifiers, both, all three clarifiers are actually on the capital plan for um, rehab.
So wouldn't have to come out a contingency is budgeted for?
The, the, it's on the capital plan, but it's on a capital plan for future dates and I don't remember what year. Um, but those are, those, those, so it wouldn't have come out. Of that money, that's why we actually took it out of uh, probably contingency if I recall correctly, but. That's why it would come out of contingency and it would be capitalized.
Well, it's gonna come up later when you talk about the roof because. Robin Peters involved. And then having to put it back and then you take it back out of. Pump station.
Pump station three, all those things are gonna come back up. Um, and and all those things are, you know, all those things are being evaluated and and gonna come back up, yes.
You have comments or questions? Just I have two quick ones, Dave, but dry weather flows are up, is your reason for that, like?
You know, I mean, there's dry weather flows, I mean, they're usually historically seven hundred and eighty-eight million gallons. Um, and you know, we had those two big, you know, we had those. Last two years, we've had storms in January that, you know, were kind of say unexpected, but we had a lot of. Um, you know, a a bigger than normal flow, um. Storms. But also we're seeing a lot of I N I from the different agencies. So there, um, the city, C S D and Fonskin are all giving us a lot more. Um, what we consider I N I or basically storm water flow into our system. And so that's, that affects how much water that we get into uh, into our plant. So, um, our plant is rated for. Uh, just, just under five million, four point nine, six million gallons per day. Um, and some of those, um, some of the times we've gotten. I mean, we we got five million gallons a day just from the city, uh, on some of those, some of those times. Um, that doesn't, you know, overall, we were getting about ten million into the entire plant, so it's not just the city.
I mean, for the people listening, they may not know what I N I means.
It's uh, intrude, uh, infiltration and intrusion, which is basically storm water flow. Um, that's, that gets into our, gets into the uh, member agency's systems through. Uh, manhole covers or leaking pipes or people that poke storm brains up to their. Um, sewer system and then it gets fed to us. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty big issue, uh, because we don't have the capacity to deal with the amount of I N I that we've done. Um, during that time, I know at the L P S. We were getting five million from the city and another two million was going into the um, holding ponds at. Uh, at the L P S station, so it's quite a bit of flow. Um, and so I N I is something that. Um, Sean is, is aware of and uh, working on lining and. Um, we're working on cleaning out uh, the ponds to try and, you know. Receive some of that excess flow, so it doesn't impact our system so much because, you know, it is a big, pretty big compliance issue. Um, but because we can't actually meet our discharge requirements, we have a, we have to reduce our. B O V by eighty and by eighty-five percent and when we're getting. Um, mostly rainwater is very difficult to reduce at that point. So.
And then there's the, just what was our, the the funding ratio for the pension, what was our goal, was it ninety percent or?
Ninety percent was, ninety percent is our goal. Um, so and and we actually. And the, the, I, and since I've been here, I think there's one year that we actually hit ninety percent, um, because we, we got like a, I think it was like twenty-something percent. Rate of return and so we had a, a, that funding ratio and then. Obviously, then the rate of return on the following years went down and and then we're back to. I think it's seventy-five percent on the um. Non-peppered members of the classic members and. And the other one was the O P E V was the other one that's a funding ratio and. Um, you know, there might be, we'll have to see what, how things go, but there might be um, an opportunity to pay down some of the O P E V um. Unfunded uh, portion this year, so we'll have to see.
Any comments, questions?
Questions on the solar? Now how much did the, the solar cost? The total credits that are being used for electricity that goes against the electric bill? And the maintenance of those panels? It's probably another uh, state mandate to do it. But sometimes they can be a real loser. So if you're taking the credits and putting it against the electric bill, I can give you a. A better look on the electric. But then you still have the uh, existing. Cost of the uh. Panels. So I'd like to know uh, how much that is, how long are you gonna last? And assuming it was a state mandate. The negative.
Would anybody like me to address any of this? Sure, okay, so just to, just to, for your benefit, um, so. The solar, the solar panels are owned by G E. This, uh, we have a purchase power agreement with them to purchase power from them. Off of the solar panels, so we lease them the property. They put this, the system in, we have no responsibility for maintenance of any of that. We just receive the power and purchase the power from them at a, at a really reduced rate, a really reduced rate. Um, last I looked at it, it's like. A little over seven, seven point three cents per kilowatt last time I looked at it. Um, so, um. So that any power, we produce twice as much power during the daytime and it's fed into the system. Uh, into Bear Valley Electric System and then we draw it back out of Bear Valley Electric System at night when we're not producing power. On average, the, the, the way this per purchase power agreement and the. Um, wow, the net power agreement that we have with Bear Valley Elec- Electric saves us about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. We don't have any responsive, again, no responsibility to the maintenance of it. It's just, we just, and it's a, I think it's a twenty-five year lifespan, we put them in, they, they put them in in twenty-twenty-two. Um, and uh, we're reaping the benefit to it, so. Um. Just to kind of give you an idea of twenty-twenty-two. December twenty-two, we spent um, forty-five thousand dollars a month. Um, for, for purchasing power from Bear Valley Electric and that's in twenty-twenty-two. So what that would escalate today. Um, I, I don't wanna do the math for you, but it's, it's quite a bit of difference. So if you figure fifty thousand dollars a year, times six, that'd be over six hundred grand, we're spending around four hundred, so you can, you know, four hundred and forty, I think it was. So you can see that, um. It's quite a bit of difference.
That's all included by them?
It's all included. And we, we did a good job. So we're, we're saving the agency quite a bit of money.
And the question was about whether it was a mandate or whether.
It was not a mandate, it was, it was, uh, was not a mandate, it was an opportunity that presented itself. I, um, an opportunity, I brought it back to the board. The board decided that it was um, a, it was financially. Beneficial for the agency and they made a decision to move forward with the lease agreements with G E and um. And and uh, the power purchase agreement. And that's what we're doing today. It was not a mandate.
Justin Kelly.
Well, thank you, I really appreciate the uh, financial report, thank you. That's always good to hear, I. But review those and study those uh, when I was twice elected to the airport board, the bear airport board. Um. And I'm thankful that the board allowed the Mr. Bill Branson's question to be answered. I, I had a little question. Yeah, this, this is a joint powers authority and as a joint powers authority, does Barwin receive. Uh, revenue from our general tax levy in addition to. Member agency fees.
Are we able to answer that?
Could you please? Is it, is it part of this financial statement?
It, I mean, in general, yes.
Within this topic area, yes, if not, no.
Yeah, so we, we, um, in, in general, we have three customers, we don't, we don't tax anybody. So that we're not on the tax roll at all, we have three customers, the city, C S D and the county. So we, um, our budget is divided based on the member agencies. Uh, both the fixed and variable cost of our budget. Is passed on to each member agency based on their, um. Uh, E U count. Where, and the amount of water, the amount of water they send to us, so it's, it's a combination of the two.
Thank you for that, uh, so Barwin does not receive any. Uh, revenue from the county general tax levy, is that what the answer is?
That's the general.
General tax.
Not on the tax.
It's all from the member agencies.
It's all from the member.
Okay, that's what I thought and that means my, this. Even more important, we saw in the report that uh, over. Various periods of years. The uh, increases have risen and at the last. When the report comes off was over the last uh, three years, there was eleven percent increase.
That's right.
Uh, the report is telling. In what it doesn't say. In the last two years, over the last two years, year over year and the last year, year over year. The fees that the member agencies are charging. The uh, end customer have been increased because of the so-called replenished big bear. More than double. So I, you know, if we're gonna cut it off at three years, which is about when the city council approved a five-year increase. Which more than doubled, the uh, fees and C S D has twice. Approved an increase of eighteen percent and another eighteen percent. It's uh, it's going up and uh, I appreciate the comments by, uh. You know, Director Walsh is uh, the sage of C S D. He asks terrific questions and he knows the finances. And I really appreciate that, he can expound on that, just. And I really appreciate that, he can expound on that just, but. You know, it's not the full story when we look at more than doubling. The revenues for Barwood because of the so-called replenished paper project. And that's what is coming out of the pockets. Of the people. And that's, that's not shown in the, the graphics at least, I mean, if we dig into the financials, that's where you find that more than doubling. Gosh, or a project that is now. Or at least should be defunct. Uh, I think it's time for Barwood to address that and. The member agencies to address that and stop collecting fees, supposedly fees. I believe, it's my opinion legally, that they are taxes. Disguised as fees and we're looking at that from a legal. Standpoint and other things that are even criminal, very even criminal activities regarding this. Um, so that's something for the, this board to, to look at. Stop charging us for replenished big bear that we call it, which is just a sales technique. Name and, uh. Get on the wagon to ref- refunding the money that we put into this ridiculous project. Yes, thank you.
They're waiting until after the election.
Yeah.
Joyce Chris?
I know you're waiting till after the election, want to see who's on the city council, if you can replace Andrew behind. But just a bunch of BS or probably.
So listening to this financial report and. Was not to be punished, put in the budget before approval, I know that there's some stuff approved, but. It's like everything is tied into the budget, there's replenish carryover, there's replenish bridge loan, there's replenish reuse rates, there's also the non-op piece. And I'd like to know, why is it all tied into the whole Barwood budget instead of being separated out so we can actually see what things cost? And that is not right, and I think that goes back into the legal issues that Joseph Kelly was speaking about. Detail expenditures, expectancies and all that stuff along with what you're being taxed for. What, how much is being taxed for replenish? And how it's being used and it needs to be separated out, it can't be all lumped together. That is not a proper way to show the public what we're being charged for something to, to, to throw it into the regular stuff. So basically this replenish is getting tied up into regular sewer business and that shouldn't be, it shouldn't be separated out. All right, um. For all to see. And, um, you're hiding the cost of, of, of normal operations by putting replenish in there, uh. Also, we were talking about, oh yeah, all those lawyer fees, and if we're being charged lawyer fees, we replenish, we want to see all the costs for the lawyers also, we want a breakdown of replenish. All past and future. Um, so I was hearing about the sewer water, who, sewer water gets into the, I mean, how much? Uh, runoff water gets into the storm water, gets into sewer water, why isn't there proper, um. The, sir, uh, drains put in to keep this, the, uh, rainwater out of the sewer water? I don't understand that, we have them all over the place where we separated out, so that's what needs to be done, so we don't have any future issues. So finding out where the storm water is coming from and keep it out of the sewer water. We definitely don't want it together because then we have to pay the habits. It's stupid. Right, let's see. So the solar panels you were talking about, uh, what about, uh, you're, you mentioned of the, the sir. Um, so I'm assuming you're leasing land and you're supposed to be getting money back? Um. Oh, so I was wondering about that, so I'd like to have more details about that, um, that's all. I think that did okay. I don't have any more questions.
Any comments, questions, board members? Moving on to, uh. Maybe, maybe the other eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And the cloud budget for the, uh, significant.
Yes, so, um. After, uh, we had an opportunity to. Well, I got approached by, um, the operations manager. Uh, to ask me to come out and take a look at the roof over it, uh, the O A C building. Uh, and I looked at the roof at the O A C building and I felt like that there was more. An issue that I wanted to address right away. Um, some of the things that I didn't want to happen is there were, there is some, uh, I didn't want mold going out of there. All those other things and there's a lot of leaks that are going on and we're trying to prevent that whole thing. The other part of the issue that we, uh, um, that we discovered was. That in the original estimate, um, there was an old part of the building that was put in. In the sixties. That wasn't actually included in the original estimate, so you'll see, you see the different number because, um, there was. I, I think, um. About, uh. Three thou- three, uh, thousand square feet of building that wasn't originally included, it was actually part of the old building. And when they did the, the original, the last estimate. They just included the new building, so I went back out, reevaluated. The roof, um, structure, the roof, uh, itself and the square footage. Um, we've come up with the appropriate square footage and we'd like to address, uh, that issue. Uh, right away, um. Again, not typically something I would do is allocate it to a different project and then take it back out and I apologize for that. Again, we will be discussing this other project that will bid out in, um, the spring. And during the budget process and allocate additional money towards that project. Um, for, uh, that repair that we, that anticipated repair that we, um, are expecting, uh, to do. Um, next fall, so we're going to bring it out in the, bid it up in the spring. Um, so, uh, that way the, the city doesn't gobble up all of the excellent contractors that we have up here. Um, and that way I actually have access to them and put something on their plate to, to do, um, coming in the fall. So we're going to get, we're, I'm trying to beat Sean to the punch realistically. Um, and, and straight, it's, um, so. That's the reason why. And, um, I'm available for any questions that we have.
Questions or comments from board members? Walsh, O A C?
Operations in control.
Appro- operations in control. Center, is it?
Dry line.
The, or operations in control, yes. It's the office. It's the office space that has, um. Where all the employees are, the little, the bullpen.
Or the, the lab type.
The lab, it, it's all of that.
So it's not the drying line.
It's, pardon me?
It's not the drying line.
No, it is not, this is all it, it has the skater system. It has, you know, the showers, it has, um, the lab. Um, it has, um, the headworks. So it, it, it covers all of that area.
And compared to re-roofing this building, it's the exact same square footage.
Complication in that. It, it's the exact same square footage, but less complicated than this. Pretty straightforward.
Comments or questions? I mean, I'm going to back to the board for motion. Nobody putting in comments? Uh, moving through hundred twenty-five thousand from capital logic for the O A C group judging.
Sorry.
There's a second hold off digits.
Vice Chair Erin.
Hi.
Director Segolia.
I.
Director Walsh.
I.
And Chairman.
Hi. I'm Tennessee, adjourned November twenty-seventh, and we scheduled a special release.
Typically, the agency adjourns for November December meetings due to the proximity to the holidays. And we have a few dates and times available for you to consider. Tuesday, December third at ten AM, two PM or five PM. Wednesday, December fourth at five PM or Thursday, December fifth at five PM.
Could you round those off here?
Tuesday, December third, ten AM, two PM or five PM. Wednesday, December fourth at five PM. And Thursday, December fifth at five PM.
Not on any of those days at night at the five PM anyway. So you're not too keen on your December? Third. Morning? Begin of September five. All those waters would. Do you do data like in cave? And open to any of those.
So it's December, it's December third, okay for everybody? It's Tuesday and would you like ten AM, two PM or five PM?
Five.
Five PM?
I can talk.
All right.
Is that okay? Okay. Almost announced, Mr. DeMann, your comments?
December third at five PM.
I, I have none.
And, uh, board members, I do. Mr. Russo asked you to read this since he couldn't be here tonight. At the last meeting. John asked about how we began the process of returning monies for the replenish bigger project and how much it is and what the timeframe looks like for each funding source. You, I. Interpreting, he meant, Mr. Lawrence was unable to answer the question, as a director, I, being John Russo, requested you set up a special meeting. Of the board to be home on or before October thirty-first to discuss the details of terminating the project, replenish big bird and to hold a board vote on it. Without an approval of the E I R and vinyl impact report, the project should not be moving forward, install tactics should not be utilized. Any comments? Saying that, we'll turn the meeting.